We're live. So I would like to welcome you and call to order the June 9th, 2020 Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. If you would please, I'm going to mute all of you and then please join me in the pledge of allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So if the council members want to unmute themselves, that would be appropriate so we can talk about this evening's agenda. Before we get, I'd like to, it indulged me, the chief and I both have prepared some messages that we would like to share regarding the death of George Floyd and the protests that we've seen in our community and other communities. So chief, if you'd like to go first and then I'll follow you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I appreciate you giving me just a couple of minutes tonight before you start your regular meeting. Since May 25th, we've seen a period of unrest in our country we've not witnessed in decades. But after the murder of George Floyd, the hands of law enforcement, how could we not? I'm angry. I'm outraged. Not only that, but what I have seen from some in my profession in the last 15 days. What we have witnessed does not meet our values, nor does it meet our code of ethics. But I am proud. I am proud of what I have witnessed in our own community as our public has risen up to demand change. I am proud of the voices and the sea of faces who have loudly demanded that we be better and have done so peacefully. Their message should not be obscured, nor should others co-opt it for their own purposes. So our city so far has seen two protests, forceful yet peaceful. The organizer of the event on Sunday was a 16-year-old South Kitsap student. Her passion and desire for change was so strong that she was able to muster 200 people to march on City Hall. I cannot compare that to my experience when I was 16. As disappointed as I am with those who misrepresent our profession, I could not be prouder of the community that I call home. Every day, we watch our public loudly demand what they deserve. Every day, they keep their message clear and undiluted. Change is coming and we are okay with that. We are here to work with this community because we are part of this community and I have never been prouder to serve you and to serve this community. I denounce all acts of racism. It does not belong in our police department, does not belong in our nation, and it does not belong in our community. And I want you to hear this from your police chief. Black lives matter. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
To prepare a statement today too, and I'm heartbroken that George Floyd and too many others have senselessly lost their lives. Black lives matter. I strive for Port Orchard to be a community where we are all welcome and safe and right now across the country, black Americans are crying out for love and support. I support the rally against racism and the many in our community that gather to peacefully express their discontent and anger. We as leaders cannot and should not ignore the cries of what we do to fight against the injustice that exists. I echo the words of Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do what is right." As mayor, my job is to appoint a police chief that shares the value of our community and leads his team consistent with those values. I have the utmost confidence in Chief Brown and his ability to lead, but I would not be doing my job as a leader if I did not regularly evaluate our police department and its practices with a critical eye, particularly now in the face of calls for reform. I am committed to enhancing our efforts to monitor and root out any inappropriate police response or use of force. The support of the governor, I support the governor's efforts to convene a task force to evaluate policing practices in our state and develop meaningful legislation for police reform where needed. The city's commissioned officers are trained by state-directed experts and the governor's commitment to change and changes to the training of our new officers is imperative. I also commit to hold our police officers accountable to our community and to ensure all voices are heard in this process. When it comes to ensuring Port Orchard is a safe and respectful community, we all must participate. I encourage all to speak and I commit to listening and engaging in long overdue dialogue. I encourage the citizens of Port Orchard to use the utmost powerful tool and vote in the upcoming primary elections and fall elections. I recently came across a statement from an American author, Doug Wilford, that offered me clarity. My wife comes to me in obvious pain and asks the question, "Do you love me?" And I answer, "I love you. I love everyone." It would be truthful, but also hurtful and cruel in the moment. If a coworker comes to me upset and says, "My father just died," a response of everyone's parents die would be truthful, but also hurtful and cruel in the moment. So when a friend asks to speak, friend speaks up in an obvious time of pain and hurt and says, "Black lives matter," a response of "All lives matter" is truthful, but is hurtful and cruel in the moment. In this moment, I seek to offer comfort to those in pain and make a commitment to do better. So thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Both were very powerful.
I, we're to the approval of our agenda this evening, Councilmember Kuchardi, do you want to add a couple of items to the night's agenda?
Yes, please. The first one would be a business item would be 7H and it would be a letter supporting the Port of Bremerton Breakwater Project. And then I'd also like to add under bullet point number eight, a discussion item that is speaking to the Port Orchard Cares Program.
Is there a motion to add two business items? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I think I heard Councilmember Deener first, so I have a motion by Councilmember Kuchardi and a second by Councilmember Deener to add two business items. The first, which is business, one business item, a letter of support for the Port of Bremerton's Breakwater Project. And then additionally, a discussion item, which I previously had on my mayor's report, it's just grown a bit, so thought it'd be appropriate to be a discussion item about the Port Orchard Cares Grant Program. All, is there any discussion of adding, further discussion of adding these two items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those items have been added to the agenda. Any other additions or modifications to this evening's agenda?
I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, I heard a motion by Councilmember Ashby and a second by Councilmember Kuchardi to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion of this evening's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. We are to our first citizen comment period of the evening. It is for items that are on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this evening's agenda? Mr. Murphy, I see you waving your hand. I will unmute you and there you go. So please, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I would like to address, I think it's item C on the agenda, the PPE. And I just need to say that I have been working with the mayor on this already. He's given me masks to distribute throughout town and over the course of the last week and this week and continuing this week, I will be basically going out and handing out, you know, bundles of masks to all the business owners that I can find. It's kind of hard driving down the road and whipping into one business and obviously I'm not going to get them all, but you know, they're really grateful for the opportunity to get, you know, some PPE from the city and the Chamber of Commerce. I let them know, I have a little cover sheet that I put on it and the mayor and I have talked about this and I encourage, encourage the city to continue in this process. In my discussions with the mayor is, I don't know exactly what folks want. If you've seen Paul's bow, the Paul's bow has given out 100 free masks and 10, 100 disposal masks and 10 cloth masks and a quart of hand sanitizer and, you know, and they're, they're going all out on it. We are not quite to that scale, but it is one that the businesses appreciate the support that they're getting from the city. So that's what I'd like to say on that. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, is there anyone else? I see a number of guests in this evening's meeting. Is there anyone else wishing to address the city council for items on the agenda? There is a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting for items not on our agenda.
Mayor, you might have to unmute people that aren't on video.
Yeah, I didn't mute anyone, but they're, they're welcome to unmute themselves and address the council if there's, is a need. Okay, I'm hearing no one, so and not see anything in the chat box, so we will move on to our consent agenda. I'll close the citizen, first citizen comment period and we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Ashby, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion of the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved for this evening. We'll move to our business items, the first of which is adoption of a resolution approving a contract with A Advanced Septic Services for the 2020 McCormick Woods Annual Septic Tank Pumping. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so on May 12th, 2020, the city established a list of qualified contractors from the 2020 MRSC Small Works Roster, which is attached to Resolution Exhibit A for main category septic systems and subcategory septic tank cleaning pumping to perform the 2020 McCormick Woods Annual Septic Tank Pumping. On May 14th, 2020, in pursuit to Resolution 01-17, bidding procedures, the city's Public Works Department emailed an invitation to bid for the 2020 McCormick Woods Annual Septic Tank Pumping to, for contract roster. The city received one bid in the amount of $11,317.50 from A Advanced Septic. On June 1st, 2020, the city's Public Works Department staff completed the MRSC Mandatory Bitter Responsibility Checklist and determined that A Advanced Septic Services bid of $11,317.15 or 50 cents was the lowest qualified bid and the Public Works Department has confirmed that the bidding requirements for the Public Works Department have been followed. Staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 017-20, thereby approving contract C050-20 with A Advanced Septic Services for the 2020 McCormick Woods Annual Septic Tank Pumping Contract in the amount of $11,317.50 with the current term beginning June 20th or 9th, 2020. That's it.
Councilmember Deener, you got your hand raised, we need you to unmute yourself.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 17-20, thereby approving contract number CO50-20 with A Advanced Septic Services Incorporated for the 2020 McCormick Woods Annual Septic Tank Pumping Contract in the amount of $11,317.50.
Second.
Got a second by Councilmember Clausen and a main motion by Councilmember Deener. Mr. Dorsey, the total of this is 11,300 and if I remember right, we have about 250-ish of these step systems remaining. How many of them does this pump out roughly? I know they need to be pumped every four or five years. You're muted.
Yeah, we're on a five-year cycle. I think we have a few more. Do some quick math here. So that's 25.
About 25. And I know we've got, we're working on, we put it on hold. We didn't do any last year, but the conversions, we've got about 80-ish people waiting on a list and we recently had a meeting that we're moving forward with those conversions. So we'll get down under 200 of these systems remaining by the end of the year is the goal. So.
And even though we're over in this particular line item from what we allocated in 2020, we're still be under in that sanitary sewer category just above it, so.
Councilmember Kuchardi, you had a question and then.
Just a quick go back before we take a vote on this. I don't know that we read into the record, Mayor, like you normally do, just kind of talking about the type of action we can take during these, kind of these Zoom meetings. I didn't know if you wanted to address that real quick, just so it's on the record.
That's not a bad, we don't longer have those restrictions. The latest order changed that. We do have the, the statement on here and I did miss it, though pursuant to the governor's stay safe and stay, stay home and stay safe order, the council will take actions necessary on, we don't no longer have to do the routine business, but we are conducting this meeting via Zoom because of the governor's order and City Hall still isn't open, but thank you for asking that question.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Clausen, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, I just, I think Mark answered it. We only had 7,500 in the 2020 budget and yet this is 11,000. The staff report indicates a budget amendment may be required and yet, Mark, you just said that there's money in something above. I'm not sure what that above is.
We have money in the fund balance overall and matter of fact, I think it's the same fund. Correct me if I'm wrong, Noah. The fund is also what we're going to do the conversions with out of sewer operations budget and, and we didn't do any conversions last year and we have more than sufficient funds to do the conversions that we have. So it's, it's in the same fund. While this activity is over budget, that fund, we have fund balance from other activities that weren't done in that fund. So we likely won't have to do a budget amendment because we have sufficient spending authority in that category.
Yeah, there's a, there's a million dollars budgeted under 431, 5, 535, 30, 40, which is the other services and charges category for, under the sewer program, so.
So we've got it covered.
We got, at this point, we've got it covered, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Dorsey or myself? Okay. Voting on adoption of a resolution approving a contract with A Advanced Septic Services, Inc. for the 2020 McCormick Woods Annual Septic Tank Pumping. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to item B, which is a resolution approving a contract with Applyaline LLC for the 2020 thermoplastic application. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. On May 7th, 2020, the city established a list of qualified contractors from the 2020 MRSC Small Works Roster, which is attached to Resolution Exhibit A for main category road construction, repair and maintenance in the subcategory of asphalt, pavement, grinding, planning, pulverizing, pavement markings to perform the 2020 thermoplastic application on May 7th, 2020, in pursuit to Resolution 019-17. The city's Public Works Department emailed an invitation to bid for the 2020 thermoplastic application from five different small works roster contractors. We received two bids with all applicable tax, labor and equipment, materials and fees included prior to the May 29th, 2020 deadline. Right, 33 and applying line was at 39,734, but we determined that Stripe Right was deemed non-responsive as they did not include traffic control in their bid and that was in the original invitation. So on June 1st, 2020, the Public Works Department staff completed the MRSC Mandatory Bitter Checklist and determined that Applyaline's bid of $39,734 was the lowest qualified bid. The Public Works Department has confirmed that the bidding requirements have been followed. So staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 016-20, thereby approving contract C049-20 with Applyaline LLC for the 2020 thermoplastic application contract in an amount not to exceed $39,734 and there is $40,000 in that particular line item.
Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 016-20, thereby approving contract number C049-20 with Applyaline LLC for the 2020 thermoplastic application contract in the amount not to exceed $39,734.
Second. A second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Is there any questions for Mr. Dorsey on this matter? Okay, hearing none, you'd be voting on the adoption of a resolution establishing, approving a contract with Playaline LLC for the 2020 thermoplastic application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the contract is approved. Mr. Dorsey, we'll see you later.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're on to item C, adoption of a resolution establishing and ratifying a program to assist small businesses and provide personal protective equipment. Mr. Crocker, are you in the audience? There you are.
Yes, I am, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. The staff report is quite lengthy, so I'm not going to read it as I normally would, but I think the council is very much aware of the city's intent and goal to support small businesses and provide personal protective equipment. The mayor has asked that we develop a policy to operate under and a total budget of $5,000 in order which to purchase PPE and distribute to our businesses. Again, the policy is attached with the resolution and is designed to assist small locally owned port orchard businesses to obtain personal protective equipment as, as they meet the criteria outlined in the policy documents. We are certainly supportive of this and staff would recommend that the council approve the resolution, establishing this program and also ratifying the actions that the city has already taken with the Porter Chamber of Commerce and the Port Orchard Bay Street Association to provide PPE equipment as of today.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to adopt a resolution establishing and ratifying a program to assist small businesses and provide personal protective equipment as applicable in the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, a second by Councilmember Kuchardi. And you'd heard Matt speak earlier about this. So far, with what I have ordered and Matt's received about 500 masks total, himself, the chamber and the merchants association. Corinne and I went door-to-door downtown to merchants and we've been giving them out in groups of 10s and 20s and with the, and Matt is doing the same and telling businesses if they need more to reach out. 10 seems pretty insignificant, but we want to make sure everybody's got a little bit to start with if they need them. We'll probably give out the next groups in 20s and between what I've, what we've given out and what I have ordered and then I also have a supply of reusable masks ordered through, that are logoed from Kitsap Transit, about 250 of them and we'll use maybe 50, 60 of them around City Hall and then I plan to give those out also in the community. I think of the 5,000, I'll probably be close to 2,000 of that expended in masks and then I, so and then I've asked Mr. Murphy, I don't want to, this could be used in any way for PPA, maybe messaging, but I don't want to just order signs from a printing company or a hand sanitizer, a bunch of mask if that's not what the need is. So Matt's helping me reach out to the community, figure out what the need is for this remaining $3,000 and we'll, we'll provide that, you know, in the, in the form of some sort of PPE or educational materials. Paul's Bow is taking a little different spin. They've put about $10,000 into this. They've ordered, I think it's 1,000 masks, 250 reusable, 25 gallons of hand sanitizer. So, but when we talk about the grant program a little bit later, they're going to, looking at funding at about half of what we're talking, what I'm going to propose. So everybody's got a pot of money and is doing something a little different with it in each community and I think this is a good start. If we go through this and there's still another need, I might come back and ask the council for additional authority as it relates to this. So Mr. Clausen, you raised your hand.
Yeah, and you know, some folks in the community might question, why are we spending probably dollars for these kinds of events? And you know, from my perspective, the quicker we can get businesses up and operating, the better it is for the city because the sooner they start operating, the sooner that the sales tax starts to get generated, which is something that we desperately need as the economy moves forward. So I 100% behind this. I think it's a great thing and anything that we can do to help businesses get going is a good thing.
Yes, very good point. And also additionally, this is, this, these, these resources are coming from a pot of dollars from the federal government through our State Department of Commerce that can only be spent on COVID response. So we can't put them into our general fund. It's not coming out of our general fund. These are federal dollars that have to be used in some form to, for the COVID response.
Well, including staff time, I mean, just the time it takes to distribute and do whatever if that's not covered, I still think it's a wise investment.
Yes, that's true. Councilmember Ashby, I see your hand raised.
Yes, I did raise my hand. You know, I, I agree with helping our small businesses, getting them open. I agree with the method you're using to make sure that we're getting the businesses what they believe they need. My question is more directed to our underserved community and I know that during phase two, the, the businesses have signs up that say it's recommended that you wear a mask and they have hand sanitizer there and we're providing masks to the businesses. Do we have a way to perhaps direct some masks to our community that may not be able to afford them?
That's a great question. Masks, as we've delivered them, we're told that, we've told them, these are for your employees' use, your customers' use, however you deem them necessary. The, on the, on the, on the low income side of the ledger, I guess is what I'm, where I'm trying to get to, I just sent an email from the county that they're using. I mean, they've got millions of dollars in their bucket with the, where we got 400,000 and they bought 100,000 masks and they're reusable masks that they're deploying to the nonprofits to, to get to their clients. So, so those, those underserved are, are being taken care of, I hope. And the county has, has made a significant investment in reusable masks and you know, the disposable masks that we're putting out are at a, a price point for us at about 50 cents a piece. I know Mr. Clausen ordered some masks that just under $3 and that's probably about where the, the county is in the significant order that they're making on those reusable masks. So, so great question. Other question, Mr. Clausen, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, just kind of responding to Councilmember Ashby's question, the transit system has purchased 30,000 of the disposable masks that. Of the disposable masks that we're currently putting. Dispenser holders on our vehicles and they will be available to anyone. When they get on the bus, we're going to be encouraging face covering on the buses and that'd be one way. Additionally, we, as the mayor pointed out, we've placed an order for reusable masks and we're going to have those available. And we've also just recently accepted about 5,000 masks from the Federal Transit Administration and we expect to get another 5,000. With the expectation that they're going to be given out to members of the community. So. I don't know that we're going to be able to cover it all, but I think there's a number of different outlets available for folks who need to can get some kind of face covering.
I appreciate that you're. You know, considering the underserved because. Masks, when you go to buy them are, you know, $10 apiece or something, and that may be prohibitive for some of our families.
Agreed.
Agreed, yeah. Okay, other comments or questions about this matter? All right, I'm not councilmember Deener.
I just wanted to iterate what councilmember Clausen had to say, and I wanted to thank staff for working on this and and spending its money wisely.
Thank you. More to come on this in the discussion item. So with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution establishing and ratifying a program to assist small businesses. And provide personal protective equipment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has been approved. We are at to item D, which is the approval of approval of city of port orchard personal policies related to furloughs. So Debbie Lund is with us, our our HR. And somewhere here. So Debbie.
Good evening. As you will likely remember, we discussed this at your meeting on May 26th. Currently, the city does not have a furlough policy, so this would be. A new policy should you choose to adopt it and hence why it's coming to council tonight. At our last meeting, we talked about this policy and received direction from the council. To go ahead and authorize the continuation of healthcare benefits in the event that the mailer mayor needed to furlough employees. And prorate any leave accruals because that would be unpaid time off. And our current policy prorates all leave accruals when there's unpaid time off in that work period. Again, the mayor's intention is certainly that we don't ever have to use this policy. But we want to make it available in the toolbox should the circumstances warrant the its use. So proposed policy in front of you would be personnel policy 12.4. And happy to answer any questions.
Questions or councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, just one question under kind of key definition aid, number one, furlough day. In the event, what if we had like a half day furlough? Does this does this pick that up under that definition?
That's a good point. I know the policy certainly talks to partial day situations. I'm trying to. Look here quickly and see where it's referred, where that term furlough days is referred to. We could certainly tweak that definition to say any day or partial days.
Day or hours.
Or hours.
Well, Debbie, I mean, it is not my intent to use this, but these are. B one, maybe. Need times and we want, we need to have this tool in our toolbox. It's it's being used. Quite broadly in the in the work environment that out there right now.
Mr. Mayor, does does B one under applicability cover the concerns raised by councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, I don't know that it's that definitive. I just think that it could be, it could be used where. You know, you have half days or partial days, so we might just want to spell that out.
I think you're certainly right, councilmember, that that could very easily be the intent.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion with that correction? In it, Mr. Kuchardi?
Yeah, no problem. I would make a motion to amend this policy to allow for. Not only furlough days but furlough hours and wherever that can become applicable through this policy to make the necessary amendments.
Before you make an amendment, though, would you like to make a main, the main motion and add that amendment to it?
Okay, sorry, we didn't have, I would like, I would make a motion. Back up here, I'm sorry, scrolling around on this little device.
We all are.
Okay, I move to approve personnel policy 12.4 related to furloughs and authorize the mayor to implement the policy as presented.
Second.
So a motion and a second and then councilmember Kuchardi wanted to offer an amendment and maybe you just want to restate that for the record and then we'll get a second on it.
Yeah, Mayor, I move to amend this particular furlough policy. To include language that speaks to not only furlough days but furlough hours, as we may have partial days of furlough applicable. And that that language to be updated throughout the policy as as necessary.
Second.
Good, second on the amendment by councilmember Luke Corelli and the main motion by councilmember Kuchardi. So let's deal with the amendment first. Any further discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment to include hours, furlough hours throughout the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that amendment? Hearing none, the amendment is approved. Further discussion as the policy as a whole and the or the main motion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the city's personal policies to 12.1, 12.4 related to furloughs, say aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, the policy has been approved. And now we are on to item E, which is approval of Port Orchard City Personal Policies 9.11 regarding key and access cards. Ms. Lund.
Thank you. Another policy in front of you. Just to kind of create the backdrop here, the city council had approved via resolution 007 dash 11. Authorizing the mayor to amend personnel policies. But not to create them. So this is another creation of a policy would be numbered 9.11. As part of the security enhancement, electronic locks have been installed on City Hall and will eventually be installed at all work locations and critical physical infrastructure sites throughout the city. Employees assume responsibility for the access card and or keys once issued to them. This policy defines the employee responsibilities, including to but not including but not limited to safekeeping of the key and card. Limiting the use of the key and card and reporting of any lost keys or cards. So just like all of our policies, we have shared them with the unions and receive support from the unions and are requesting council to consider adoption of this policy.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve personnel policy 9 dot 11 related to keys and access cards and authorize the mayor to implement the policy as presented.
Second.
A second by councilmember Rosa Pepe, a main motion by councilmember Clausen. For discussion of the key cards. We're close, the hardware is all installed. We're waiting on a piece of software, so it's like we got all new locks, but nobody gave us keys. Tough to use. But we're close.
Like, my question was, when can I turn in my key? I'd love it, love to.
Soon, when the new keys work. Which is close. It's this piece that we're waiting on a piece of software from the vendor. So any further questions about key cards or this policy? Okay, you'll be voting on policy number 9.11, 9.11 regarding keys and and key card access. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hang on, motion carries and when we talked to our Teamsters Union member Matt, they were they're excited about it. Don't have any concerns about it and actually can't wait for us to install this technology in our critical infrastructure where it is very much needed to it are. Well, sites and pump stations and things of that nature. So thank you, Debbie. We are to item F, which is the approval of awarding the low bidder and authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement for the city's official newspaper. With the Seattle Times Company. Janine, I think you're substituting for clerk Reinderson this night.
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
It is great to see everybody, just have to say that. So RCW 35A dot 40 dot 210 and 35 dot 23 dot 352 subsection seven requires each city or town designate an official city newspaper of general population less than 20,000. The newspaper shall be of general circulation within the city or town and shall have been published regularly at least once a week. Request for newspaper publication services was published on May 29th, 2020 with bids being received by 4:00 PM Thursday, June 4th, 2020. So the city did receive two bids. The first one was the Port Orchard Independence. Their cost per single line was $2.40. Cost per additional line is 24 cents. Their circulation numbers, so within Port Orchard City limits, it's 4,106. And the South Kitsap Urban Growth Area is 15,487. And the other bid we received was the Seattle Times Company. So their cost per single line Monday through Thursday is $2.23. Cost per single line Friday and Saturday is $3.97. Cost per single line on Sunday is $5.34 and they do not have a cost per additional line at zero. Their circulation numbers, so city of Port Orchard within city limits. Their response was they would only be able to calculate by zip code, so we were not given numbers. South Kitsap Urban Growth Area on Sunday, they have 1,00154. And the South Kitsap Urban Growth Area daily, they have 651. So staff recommends awarding the bid and approval of a contract with the Seattle Times Company as the city's official newspaper as they are the lowest bidder.
If I could just speak to this for a minute, we did get a comment from a citizen today wanting us to. Not accept the low bid, which is the process we need to follow, but and and you know, the. Using a print newspaper is really an outdated method of communicating, you know, with your community. And but it is required as to have an official newspaper by state statute. So we have to publish. You know, our ordinances and I know when we do bid documents, we need to use our official newspaper. But there's other methods like the Daily Journal of Commerce that we use because that's where the construction industry looks for these types of things. Where how, you know, our most effective means which we use are our webpage, our Facebook and our and pushing things out to our community. You know, in our email lists. So I hate to see this to go out to not, you know, the porter in our local newspaper. But, you know, we're challenged by one, we need to take the low bid. And secondly. Right now, the Port Orchard Independent isn't meeting our business needs because they're not producing a print version. And so we're having to pay significantly more to print our publications, our notifications in the Kitsap Sun, which did not submit a bid. For this this body of work. And when in historically, when we used our weekly newspaper. When we have a council meeting in the evening, when we go to publish the next day, the action you've taken. It is delayed significantly because we missed their the publication deadline for Friday's paper. So everything we actions we we wish to take, take almost a two week period where when we if we work with a daily newspaper. Which will end up with in this scenario, it will be, it'll it'll meet our business needs. At a much better councilmember Clausen.
Yeah, do we know why, for example, the Kitsap Sun did not submit a bid?
We reached out multiple times to to them regarding this and.
Reached out in the sense of asking them why they didn't versus, hey, we're have a proposal for you, submit a bid.
I don't know that that particular question was asked, John, but we asked for a proposal from them several several times. I know that during this period when we weren't, you know, they've been serving as our official somewhat as our is our print version. And. We were paying, Janine, what was the cost on that? It was it was astronomical. They they weren't really interested in in a proposal like this when we reached out to them. So Jean, can you answer that question?
I can, I can definitely find out what the.
When we were publishing though, here just recently, it was in the hundreds of dollars.
Yes.
What each time we publish something, which was 10 times higher than the official newspaper pricing that we're getting here.
Yep.
Well, I just did, just so you know, I have a general problem with. Going all the way to Seattle to find a newspaper to cover our requirement. I just, I think we should throw these out and go out to bid again and see if we can solicit.
I know Paul's bow just had the same problem and went the same route we did. Just in the last month. So but I can appreciate your concern.
I I think it'd be worth reaching out to the at the very least Kitsaps on and ask them. Why they're not submitting a bid. I mean, if they don't want to bid, we can't force them by any means, but. I just have a hard time accepting this.
Yeah. So councilmember Kuchardi.
Yeah, just a couple of points. So yeah, I think we have two different issues here. I'll get to the price one here in a second, but. Talk to us again, just remind us of the of the of the state requirement for a print newspaper. So repeat that. Are you saying that? You know, we cannot go with the with the Port Orchard Independent because there is no print version, so it's not even an option.
Right now, they are not meeting our needs at all because they do not print a newspaper. They are not printing a physical newspaper and that is the state. So Charlie can speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is something that's dictated by state statute. And the statute does use the term published and legal minds and legal scholars have debated whether that word is meant to reflect sort of the antiquated. Physical publishing. If you look back at the legislative history, it supports the idea that it is something that has to be physically published and there can't be any barriers to access. Such as use of a computer, use of any other sort of resource. So. The the consensus in the legal community seems to be that a online paper does not meet your statutory obligations. So the legal recommendation is that you have both, if you choose to go with an online paper, you're going to need two papers essentially. So. You would need an online paper and a physically published paper. Some online papers, and I don't know if yours is offering this, are also partnering with other small newspapers. So then there's a public, a physical publication occurring somewhere to meet that obligation. I don't know if this one is offering that, but. The newspapers are cognizant of the fact that the publication element requires a physical publication.
Right. So I was going to say, I don't even know if the Port Orchard Independent, from what you're saying, is even a qualified bidder. Which which is interesting. Number two, though, I just wanted to bring this up as well. If the intentions of this notification is to reach our people in the city of Port Orchard. Then media typically is priced per for what we kind of use per thousand. And I think that's relevant in this. And so I don't know that in this particular pricing scenario. That the Seattle Times is the least expensive option. And if we're trying to reach our people in the city of Port Orchard. The cost of reaching 1,000 people, which is typically how media is purchased. I don't know, I think it's arguable that this particular bid would be much more expensive than the than this the Port Orchard Independence bid.
Right. I agree.
Councilmember Deener.
So I agree with with the other council members that have spoken on this. I have a fundamental issue with. Advertising the paper that's read by a fraction of our population in our area. Also, I'm curious, how much was the budget on this last year? Do we know how much we're actually talking about spending?
It would, it was in the thousands. And the current model that we're having to do is in the thousands, pushing 1,000 a month.
Okay, well, I I concur with John. I see that we can. Reject all bids and. Start to try this one more time. We have that available to us if we want.
Okay, councilmember Clausen.
Yeah, in reviewing the letter that was attached to this from some publication, I'm not quite sure I understand their statement, but they talk about. Because of. The decline in advertising. in advertising revenue that the independent hasn't been published. But then they refer to the Bainbridge Review is not been paused, and this will continue to be offered as an alternative publication. Does that mean that they are willing to send their Bainbridge Review publication to the residents in Port Orchard?
I know it was clerk's office that did this body of work. So I don't believe that is circulated on our community.
I appreciate, but they're saying that it has not been paused. This will continue to be offered as an alternative publication. I don't know what that means.
Councilmember Ashby, I can't.
I will defer after Charlotte speaks.
Thank you, councilmember. This is typical of the smaller papers right now in response to COVID. The ones that have paused are offering as an alternative, one of their partners that have not paused physical publication. But typically, they're not expanding the circulation for the partner paper. It's simply offered as somewhere out in the ether, there is a physical publication occurring in an attempt to meet that statutory requirement. That is what's happening in other jurisdictions, and that's what I would read as the meaning behind that statement in the letter.
So
Councilmember Lucarelli, go ahead, Councilmember Ashby, follow up.
Okay, I'm agreeing with everything everyone has said. But I do not see any more people in our community reading the Bainbridge Island Review, or whatever the Bainbridge Island paper is, as compared to who would read the Seattle Times in our area. The other thing I want to point out is we use this publication basically when we solicit bids. We are very active in other medias to when we have public hearings or need to get information out that specifically affects our community. So I think that a couple of things, one, we maybe need to rethink that print piece. And if we can still put things, if we elect to do a contract with, say, the Seattle Times, and we meet our statutory requirements with that, we can still use other media to reach our local folks that may be easier for them to obtain the information.
That's well said. And that's exactly what we've been. I mean, what we've been public, if you guys take action on an ordinance, it's the publication of that ordinance needs to be put in our official newspaper after the fact. We do bid bid advertising. I can assure you, the contractors that we want building sewer lift stations aren't picking up the Port Orchard Independent.
We're generally doing trade magazines and that sorts of things for those kind of bids. But it's legal requirement of publishing ordinances and legal notices and things of that nature. That is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, that's why we have to have an official newspaper.
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Lucarelli, you raised your hand again.
We've got a couple of issues, I think. Partly, it's it's being able to have locals be able to see these listings. Whenever we put any of these bids in, they do appear online, correct? When we're using the Port Orchard Independent, right, Janine?
Yeah, usually usually bids, and we also post them to our website, depending on the bid. So definitely.
But where we get responses to those types of bids is in trade publications.
I understand that. I understand that part of it. However, whatever we do as a council is also going in there. So the locals are able to see it. A Seattle paper with so little circulation over here, and especially given that the only one that they gave is Sunday, which wouldn't we wouldn't be advertising in because the rates are so high, doesn't make sense to me at all. And the Port Orchard Independent is working towards the goal of printing again, having a print publication, correct?
We hope so.
I
All I can say is they they stopped printing almost two months ago.
Nick has something to say.
Bond?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention how critical the daily versus weekly issue is to D C D. We print probably, you know, three to ten legal notices a week related to development permit applications, which if we miss the cutoff for the deadline, it's delaying our ability to schedule hearings. It's really slowing down our development process. And my worry with rejecting both of these bids is it might send a message to the Seattle Times not to reapply. And if Kitsap Sun truly isn't interested, or if their prices are so high, I worry that there aren't other daily papers available. And so I just, I want to emphasize the need for the daily paper from a land use legal notice standpoint is being really critical to the efficient operation of our department and good customer service to applicants.
And I want to assure you, where we're where we're reaching our community is our webpage and our Facebook page. And not only do we put these things in the newspaper because we have to, we also put them in the in the put them in the in the forum in out there where our community is seeing it. Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
I was just gonna say, I think we're at the point where it's, you know, for daily paper, and I get the rationale from Nick and yourself, Mayor, that at least we want to try the Kitsap Sun to see if we could do local because of the outreach and see if they are competitive. I have no problem with not going with the weekly paper for the reasons you already said. But I think it's worth the worth the effort to go to the sun.
So Councilmember Kachardi?
I think Clausen was first. Go ahead, John.
Well, I wanted a question of the attorney. If we were to reject these bids and go back out the bid, and we did not receive any bids, what is our course of action at that point?
Um, I believe the typical bidding approach would would kick in where if you haven't received any bids, you would then be authorized to go and directly negotiate with a vendor.
That would be my thought as well. So if the Seattle Times elected not to submit a second bid, and we got no one else, then we can just go to whomever and see if we can negotiate a contract.
Correct.
Thank you.
I know Clerk Reinesten isn't here, but I know she made multiple phone calls to the Kitsap Sun about this. But it doesn't hurt to reach out again. Councilmember Kachardi?
Yeah, another question for for council here. I've heard this a number of times. The discussion tonight about wanting to stay local, unfortunately, does that not violate the the procedures that we're supposed to use for a bid of this nature?
Well, I think that the the factor of local circulation is general, what defines general circulation is very nebulous. So I think your conversation is focused on reaching the circulation levels that you're interested in. And I think that's been the tenor of your conversation.
Good. Okay, thank you.
And I would add to that in the fact that one of the prospective bidders did not provide us with the numbers of circulation in the Port Orchard area. So we're making an assumption.
Well, and again, back to my earlier statement, if you break it down, cost per thousand on how you media is usually purchased, the Seattle Times bid is not the the lowest bid if we're trying to reach our locals.
So in the event we were, I'm hearing you would like to reject this, is and if the Kitsap Sun still does not want to submit a bid, I there's business reasons why the weekly paper isn't fulfilling our needs as a city, as an official newspaper. It delays everything we do by almost two weeks because of their publication deadlines.
This, Mr. Mayor, can we re take a different approach with the bid so that a more robust circulation is required? Can we spec that?
The challenge to that is the only daily newspaper isn't willing to submit a bid.
But I think we're asking to check that as well. And
Okay.
I understand that better.
I will do it again. But I assure you, they're not interested in being our daily newspaper. They the rate that they want to charge is ten times higher than this. I know that Brandy's not here. So obviously, we're going to need to table this. I'm trying to to get clear direction here on the intent. Are you comfortable with something that isn't meeting our need our business needs? Councilmember Kachardi?
Yeah, I'm taking this entire conversation into perspective. I think the most credible testimony tonight was provided by Mr. Bond. And I think we're, I think we're getting a little bit skewed here that this is a statutory requirement. Unfortunately, none of this information as far as who it's reaching and how people are responding to it. I think I think that's the key focus here. And I think, you know, partly what we're doing by having this print newspaper, it is antiquated, but it is what it is right now until something changes. I don't want to interrupt the business of our city. And I would be in favor tonight of voting for the Seattle Times because it's the only option to keep businesses going. I think what staff just told us tonight that in reality, where people are seeing this and where our locals are seeing this are all of the different mediums that we're doing. And so I feel like we're getting hung up a little bit. And and I think for the money we're talking about here, to be able to slow down our city staff on doing the great work they do every day, I think we're missing the point. And I would be in favor of of moving the Seattle Times forward for those reasons.
Councilmember Clausen?
Yes. And I don't believe that by rejecting these bids and going back out the bids that we're going to stop the process. We have a process in place now. It's just not as cost effective as it would be otherwise if we had a bid. We're not stopping the publication. We're just simply asking to go back out and trying to see if we can solicit more opportunities for it to be published here locally, and a better opportunity for our community to be able to see the notices in something that they receive routinely, as opposed to going out of their way in the case of I have to go get the Seattle Times to find out what's going on in Port Orchard.
Councilmember Chang?
In the interim, if we did table this, would we would business as usual just continue to use the Kitsaps on?
Right now, we're publishing twice. We're publishing in the Independent because it's our official newspaper, but they're not printing. And they're doing it online, which doesn't meet the statutory requirements. And then we're, secondly, printing it in the Kitsap Sun, which we don't have, who doesn't his hasn't been interested in entering in a contract with this. They'll just allow us to publish at a much higher rate. Councilmember Ashby?
My question is this. If we reject the bids, Councilmember Clausen, are you suggesting we work with just the Kitsap Sun and making this an exclusive contract with them? Or do we go like to the Tacoma News Tribune? Have we have we looked at that? Or I don't know if Gig Harbor, you know, prints or what? Because I'm actually supportive of the comments that Councilman Kachardi made. I am more than happy to support the bid from the Seattle Times. It meets us meets our statutory requirements. And I do not, I believe that most of our citizens get their information not by reading the public notices in the small print in the back of the paper. I think they get it from other media. And what we're talking about is something just to meet statutory requirements. I also think this is something that we should bring up with our lobbyists and see if there's an opportunity to change the antiquated system that the state requires us to use.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
And we have a contract that's shorter than a year. Make may we break this up so that we can review this again in, say, six months or so? Should should publications have changed?
Not a bad idea. Charlie, is there is there an opportunity to do that with this?
I'm looking back at the bid, the RFP. I know it's the RFP states one year. And I don't think we can deviate from that at this point. But I could look into that if that's if that's council's pleasure.
Okay. Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, my intent in my position on this would be that we retract and go back out the bids in that hopefully we can get others closer to submit a bid, whether it be the Tribune, or the Gig Harbor Gateway, or the Kitsap Sun. I, one, would be interested in trying to figure out why the Sun did not submit a bid. I know they've submitted bids in the past when we've done that. And we've elected to not accept their bid. But, you know, you never know until you inquire. I don't, I'm wondering if, Charlie, can we stop submitting our publications to the Independent because they no longer meet the minimum requirement of publication and just go to the Kitsap Sun in the interim until we get to go through another RFP process?
I don't think so, John. I think we have to have an official newspaper for the state.
But they're not, they're no longer meeting the qualifications necessary to be an official newspaper. They're not publishing, so.
Right. So you're in somewhat of a catch twenty two. By ordinance, you establish your official newspaper. So you would need to take action by ordinance to rename an official newspaper. And by state statute, you have to bid out a new official newspaper. So the mayor could, this, you're not in this pickle, this is, well, we could make an argument that you're in this pickle because of COVID nineteen, since the paper stopped publishing, potentially.
We could do an emergency order tomorrow.
We could potentially do. I haven't
If they're no longer meeting the minimum requirements of the order of the R C W, basically.
Right.
If they're not publishing, then they're no longer meet the requirements.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I that is accurate. I think it's the process by which you name a new newspaper that's the sticking point. It's whether or not you can do it on an emergency basis. And my reflection from research and from others, your city is not at all unique in this. There are many, many cities who are in this exact same position. And most are continuing to publish in two until they come up with the cycle of renaming an official newspaper, or some are doing it because their cycle is already up, which yours is. I believe this contract expires at the end of the month.
And this issue came up about six months ago, or six weeks ago, excuse me. And we knew that this deadline was coming up. So we just kind of ignored the issue and published in two publications for that period of time, knowing knowing we could fix this potentially. So I've got Noah raised his hand, then Nick, and then Sean. So Noah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to come back to the cost perspective. I believe Councilmember Deener asked what the cost of the budget was. So I took a quick look. Our advertising budget was about nine hundred dollars for twenty twenty. That's about fifteen to twenty dollars per publication. I believe when the mayor spoke before about it being ten times the amount, that's meaning we got was about a hundred fifty to two hundred dollars per publication. So you really are talking a significant increase on the financial publication, nine hundred to eight thousand, nine thousand dollars. Just want to throw that out there as we're talking about the value that are of this local paper.
And as we worked through the last six weeks, that was the only price that the Kitsap Sun was willing to offer us was that much higher rate.
Right. And I I was hoping to, I was hoping to touch on the financial aspect as well because my communication budget is in the D C D, not the council portion. I think I'm spending about three thousand to four thousand dollars a year on notices if I if I'm not mistaken, last time I checked. And the Kitsap Sun being ten times more, I mean, that's a that's a huge hit. And currently, our notices are are part of our permit fee. If we're going to, if we're going to go to a significantly more expensive paper, we're also going to need to look at putting it into the fee resolution is something that gets passed along to to applicants as part of as part of our process. So my other worry would be if the Kitsap Sun does submit, and they're the only daily paper, and they're significantly more expensive, where does that leave us in in terms of being able to choose something that we can afford?
Councilmember Kachardi?
Yeah, I'm just gonna repeat my position on this just one more time because of the testimony. I absolutely believe that, you know, the people that we are trying to reach at the end of the day are not the people that are reading this on a print version of a newspaper. So I think, you know, we're dealing with a with a with a totally, you know, irrelevant, you know, medium right now. Hopefully, we can get that changed. But but I think, you know, to be able to slow things down is going to cost us or more money to use the Kitsap Sun under the current relationship is costing us more money. And we're not, we're not solving the problem. And so what I would encourage us to do with our new communications director is to have this conversation and see, make sure that we're covering all of legitimate mediums for those that we are trying to reach for a specific purpose, that we're doing it in a timely and resourceful way. I think we're spending way too much time in I think we're spending way too much time and energy on this particular conversation. And with the risk of spending a lot more money and disrupting our staff Over something that truly this is just about a statutory requirement. And it's not, there's nothing fulfilling beyond that in my eyes.
Okay. So I got Councilmember Deener and then Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
So Sean, I understand your concerns and I don't disagree with much of what you said. My question for Perhaps Janine is, do we know if the CK publisher is under the same kinds of restrictions that the Port Orchard Independent would be? Or is that a, is that, are those separate institutions in terms of bid responses?
So what was it? The CK reporter?
Yeah, one of the sound publishing.
Sound publishing, the family. And
Yeah.
I, I don't know that it does this any, if they print it there, it doesn't do us, it's not reaching Port Orchard either.
Well, it's reaching Port Orchard more than Seattle Times.
I've never seen the CK reporter anywhere in Port Orchard myself.
I agree.
But anyway, I don't have a Councilmember Rosa Pepe, you have a comment? And then I guess we need a motion.
Mayor, I was going to make the motion so we can move up, move forward. So I would move to approve the Seattle Times Company as the low bidder and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement With the Seattle Times Company as the city's official newspaper in form acceptable to the city attorney.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Kachardi. I think Councilor Claussen, do you have another, an additional comment?
Yes, I'm wondering is if this is something that we could table until the next meeting so that we can get Information from Janine and Randy and whoever else has been involved in this discussion.
And I would also support a continuation if we can, please.
Me too.
So was there a motion to continue just for two weeks so that we can answer questions related to the bid process?
So it would be, it would be a motion to amend the motion To not award and table.
I don't want to amend the motion. I just simply want to table the motion to a date certain, which would be our next meeting. At which point hopefully we have additional information that would help us.
Tabling under Roberts rules is only for during the, the current meeting. So it would just be tabling it within the same meeting. You wanted to table a motion to later in the meeting.
That hasn't been our past, past practice, but
Oh, have you been tabling to future meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Under Roberts rules, it's only supposed to be the same meeting, but
Is there another action that we can take that would delay The vote on this particular motion?
I could withdraw the motion, I believe, according to Roberts rules.
Yes, you could withdraw the motion. Yes.
My only question first is, does this delay us in any which way for our publication since our next meeting is not for two weeks?
No, it just costs us more money.
The contract's not up yet.
The contract expires at the end of the month.
So we
We have until the end of the month.
We will be harmed by waiting two weeks. So we can, and we'll, we, I don't think we can reopen the bid process in two weeks, but we can answer your questions. Why the Kitsap Sun? Do you apply? Is about the only answer I can, and
So let me ask the question, Mayor. Why, if we're not concerned about anybody paying attention to these publications? Why are we Going to the Bremerton's Sun to publish?
Convenience? That it was, we had The clerk's office made it, made a decision to reach out to the only other newspaper in Kitsap County. We have a statutory requirement to make, to meet.
But we heard earlier that our statutory requirement is to go with our official publication. So if we simply put it with the independent, we've met the statutory requirement.
But they aren't publishing.
Well, then we go back to the question, can we throw out the independent because they're not Meeting our official newspaper and what we heard earlier is we can't do that unless we, you either take emergency action via the COVID Pandemic, or we reject the ordinance that establishes the independent. But my question really gets around to, we're not obligated to publish in the Kitsap Sun.
No, we're not. We're, we're doing it right now out of convenience.
Convenience for what?
You're legally obligated to be publishing in some newspaper that is physically publishing. And this situation that COVID-19 has created this sort of Catch 22 where your, you, your newspaper record is not publishing. And so in order to meet that statutory requirement, you're publishing in some paper that is physically publishing. But it is
Maybe I misunderstood the situation. What I thought I heard was that We are publishing in both newspapers. One, the independent because they're our official newspaper and the Sun because of convenience. But in fact, legally, we're only obligated to publish in one.
We're obligated.
If they're printing.
Yeah, we're obligated to publish in the Port Orchard Independent because that's our official newspaper. They're not printing. We're doing it online. Doesn't meet the statutory requirements. None of the other papers were offering us any different pricing other, unless we were
I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm getting splitting hairs here, but if, If we're not, if we're going to publish in the Kitsap Sun because the Port Orchard Independent, i.e. our official newspaper Doesn't meet the statutory requirement, then why are we continuing to spend money with the independent? Because we have to, because they're by ordinance, they're our official.
Correct. Cause we have to. Until you guys take action to change.
And so if we continue this for two more weeks, we're going to incur additional expenses. And now we're asking staff to reengage. We could ask our attorney to reengage over an annual budget of $900. I think this is, I think we're way in the weeds on this. I think we can check this box tonight and move forward, but I'm but one, one opinion.
Well, I think it would be worth looking at further before we start going to Seattle and spending our money.
But we've given that opportunity locally and they chose not to bid.
I appreciate that, but I don't think we've reached out to find out why. Is there a technicality or something? I think it would be worth the time to figure that out before we just blindly Start going to Seattle and spending money is all, is all I'm asking. It's one person's opinion, as you say, Sean.
Yeah, absolutely.
What I know is from talking to Clerk Reinerson, who's not on the call tonight, she's on vacation. The Kitsap Sun was not interested in bidding in this format. They're, they're interested in taking, publishing for us at a higher rate, but not at these reduced rates. Now, that was, that was what I was told by the clerk, but we can circle back to them if that's the pleasure of the council.
We've beaten this horse enough. Let's just either delay it or vote on it, one of the two.
I apologize. It does look like you can delay to the next meeting as long as the next meeting is in the same quarterly time interval. The traditional use is within the same session, but there is an exception if you wanted to table, but it has to be your next meeting. So I apologize for that.
That's, that's been our practice in the past.
Okay.
Then the appropriate thing would be to move to table if would so desired.
Correct.
So is that a motion, Mr. Claussen, to table this?
I would move that we would table this discussion to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. I had further discussion of tabling this action to our next council meeting.
We have a second on that?
We did. Councilmember Lucarelli?
Thank you.
And it's not actually debatable, that motion.
It was not debatable. Okay.
It's not debatable.
Thank you for correcting me. We do this so often.
Thank you for ending our discussion.
If it was that, he's had it done 30 minutes ago.
There's our parlor, the dairy of what we need.
All in favor of tabling this to two weeks from tonight in our next council meeting, say aye. Any opposed?
One.
One, one opposed to tabling it? Two opposed, three opposed? Okay, I, it's that Kachardi, Ashby and Chang were opposed. Motion carries to table four to three. I'm sure we're going to have another split vote in two weeks, but stay tuned.
I just, just a passing comment when John made the comment about splitting hairs, I'd like to remind him that both him and I have very few to split anymore.
Well, after phase two, I have even fewer because I made it to my barber last Saturday.
All right, moving on, we are to item G. Hopefully this goes better than the last one. Approval of the May 19th work study, council meeting minutes.
I don't know. This is a hot topic.
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
Seconded.
A motion by Councilmember Ashby, a second by Councilmember Claussen. And I see we will have one abstention for by Councilmember Deener, most likely. So all in favor of approval of the work study minutes of May 19th, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. And Councilmember Deener is abstaining. Okay, well, the item we added was a letter of support, item H, letter of support for the Port of Bremerton's Breakwater Project. I emailed that to you earlier this evening, that a draft letter. I've been sitting here on my desk, ready to go out. I usually like to get your guys' support of these types of, of letters. The, the Breakwater, I believe is, it's in the letter here. 45 years old. They're, they've designed a replacement. They're pursuing grants And other forms of funding. And ask that the city of Port Orchard, since the, the marina is located in the city of Port Orchard, that we support their application. I have a letter of support on my desk if the council chose, so chooses to support this item. Councilor Claussen?
To get this on the floor, I move that we authorize the mayor to submit a letter of support to the Port of Bremerton for the replacement of the Breakwater. For the port of the Marina.
Perfect. So I had a second by Councilmember Kachardi, main motion by Councilmember Claussen. Further discussion of this letter of support. Hearing none. All in favor of the letter of support, say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. All right. Let's get on to some fun stuff here. I'm going to attempt, hopefully I don't need any technical support here to share my screen. Mr. Bond, where's that button at?
Down at the bottom.
Support.
Share screen. There it is.
Green.
Mayor, Mayor, quick go back. I just want to make sure everything's, I don't know if we misallocated that last item to discussion under our agenda. It says no action to be taken. Was that misappropriated to discussion?
No, no, no. This is only, there's not going to be, not going to be any action at all for the, this, this CARES Act. I'm just giving you guys an overview of what I'm
Sorry. Yep, yep. Great. Thank you.
Yep. So there will be, I'm not going to ask for any action on that. So if you, can you, everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
If it were larger.
I wish it was too. So would you, can you, is it, should it's something I need to read to, for everybody or can you see it well enough? I'll work on font size next time.
I think you can just zoom your screen, Mayor. If you go to just zoom the font.
Or control scroll.
It's over here in a Word document on my other screen.
The bottom right, there's a, the magnifier.
Yep.
Magnifier. Oh yeah, look at that. Thank you, guys. We're all learning. Maybe. Okay.
Nice. Much better.
More? How's that?
If it were larger, I'd have to take my glasses off.
All right. So KITA meeting on Friday, we talked about, okay, so everyone, all the local jurisdictions and the county Have CARES Act funds. Port Orchard has roughly $430,000. County has, I think, four million plus. Paul's Bo's got a little less than us, Bremerton and Bainbridge a little more than us. And to date, we have identified about $200,000 of appropriate expenditures for the city. I'm not, I've been, I'd like to hold some of this money in reserve in case we get a bill from the Health District or DEM. I keep asking that question. I think what the scenario is going to be, at least at the, the DEM seems to be getting funded through FEMA. And the Health District is currently funded. I think where we're going to have a challenge is if there's a second wave of COVID That we're going to incur expenses again, but this pot, pot of dollars that we've got from the federal government, We have a requirement to have it all spent by October 31st. So we really can't wait too much longer. And Paul's Bo's really, everybody, every jurisdiction has a little different spin on how they're going to deploy these dollars. Cole Medina was on the call from Bainbridge Island advocating that Bainbridge, for Bainbridge's position, that they were going to give the money to the nonprofits on the island. Mayor Erickson, they've put a little bit more of this money into PPEs and, and she's advocating with her counsel for a grant program around $50,000. Mayor Wheeler's not, he's playing his cards pretty close to his vest and not really sharing what his plans are yet. He wasn't sharing them on our, on our call earlier in the week. And the county laid out a plan Just after I put this out to the other elect, so I put what I'm sharing with you tonight. I put out yesterday to the other elected officials and I got the county's proposal. And at least it was in the last couple of days. I got the county's proposal. Probably an hour or two after I put mine out. And it was purposeful. I got mine out there so that I could set the, kind of set the bar, I was hoping. And I pretty much achieved that. The county is going to put $900,000 of their money out there To this, these types of small business grants. 750,000 of it will go to eligible businesses and unincorporated Kitsap County and 150,000 to all of, To be shared amongst all of the cities. Okay? Their application process is going to be on a first come, first served basis. And I've been communicating with John Powers. I believe that the count, we're, for John Powers and KITA to administer this, because definitely Noah and I don't want to, nor do we have the bandwidth. We, we need a partner. And in Squim, they did it with the Chamber of Commerce. Lacey did a program. They did it with their, with their Economic Development Alliance. The county is going to do theirs, like I said, on a first come, first served basis. Their grants are going to be about $5,000, $5,000 each. And that's similar, what I would propose. $100,000 is going to reach 20 businesses in Port Orchard. I would also propose that we let the county go first, since theirs are on a first come, first, first served basis. We see how many of our businesses get funded to the county's program and then we follow in right behind the county. And so what you're going to see here on my screen is What my, my thoughts are, and these are just my thoughts. This will be, you know, something that I'm going to need to bring back and you'll need to approve. The business must have a license, a Port Orchard business license. Need to have been in business for a year and must have a physical location in Port Orchard. Why the number of employees is in red? Because I think Just this afternoon, I talked to John Powers and the county's program is going to be for businesses that have between three and 15 employees. And I think there's an opportunity where maybe we shift it to mirror what the county's doing. I think that's a better number myself. The county, the county is also requiring financial statements and tax returns. And KITA wants no part of that and they don't want anybody's business records to become part of a, of a public records request. So we're working through that. I don't have that in our program. You can see some of my other qualifications that any eligible expenses, a type of business eligible receive fund, funding by the Small Business Administration. Able to demonstrate loss of revenue due to COVID. Prior to giving to businesses that were closed due to the governor's order. Because so we're going to have an application process in, in ours, I believe. Your business has reopened prior to the date of the application. And if you answer, yes, Ali's, your business may qualify. What can you use it for? Payments of your business rent or other monthly business loan payments. Normal operating costs, including cost of goods sold on your business statement. I won't get into those items. And normal operating expenses. Currently, the county is allowing you to use, to pay owners' draws and wages. I purposely left that off because that was funded, those activities were funded under the PPP program That was already put out there. And I felt if there was already an ability to get funds for that activity, We shouldn't be funding that same activity. We should look for ways to fund other, other things. So The, you can see that word, and that's why I have this in red, wages bonus draw by the owner would not be covered. would not be covered under our program, and currently the county is allowing that. Businesses that received previous funding under the Working Washington Small Business Emergency Grant Program or other local grants. So there was previously, Mr. Murphy worked on helping screen applications for the prior pool of commerce dollars that were up to $10,000 grants. And that was the Working Washington Small Business Emergency Grant Program. And then the other local grants would be the catchall there for if somebody got funded under the county's program, they aren't getting the county's money and then our money too, on these $5,000 grants. Expenses that are not eligible under IRS rules wouldn't be, you know, we don't wanna fund charitable contribution, political contribution, gifts and parties or payoff, paydowns or payoffs of debt not required by their loan agreements. So that is a down and dirty, quick overview of what I'm thinking. And I want, like to solicit some input from you, if there's criteria that I'm missing, or maybe I should, we should remove, or if we need to increase, increase the pool of dollars. My, my thought was, let's start with $100,000. Have the KITA hold the additional applications, rank them. And if we get close to the deadline and we haven't expended the remaining funds, that we would offer more grants thereafter. So any thoughts on this that you'd like to share? Councilmember Kachardi? You're muted, Sean.
Just with your last statement, that if these aren't all expended, we can go out after another round, leads me to my other comment here about up above, when you're talking about FTEs, 25, and then 10 or less would have priority. I just would hate to see a bunch of businesses expend resources to fill out applications if they really don't have a, a chance, right? If there's more than 20 businesses that apply that have 10 or fewer, then it's kind of all for naught. So I kinda liked what you had said earlier about just trying to narrow that down to maybe it's between 0 and 15, or 3 and 15.
3 and 15 was the number.
Or not wasting people's time.
And correct me if I, Mr. Murphy's on the phone here, or on the meeting too, and I know that when this countywide application went out, I believe they had 800 applications. And there were, they selected 60-ish, and 35, 36 were funded, 34, he's holding up four fingers, so I was close. Yeah, I think there's, where demand is gonna far out exceed, and I like, I, I too like that idea of eliminating that bigger business and narrowing it down to that, that much smaller business. Because, I mean, this is a month or two's worth of rent, likely for, you know, one of our businesses, it's teetering. Councilmember Chang?
I was wondering why we would have a minimum of three. I, I like the, the 15 maximum, but there are, there may be businesses that have like one or two. Would they not be eligible if we do 3 to 15?
They, they wouldn't be, and, and part of my logic is, I'm trying to get as close as I can to, to the county's program so that they're similar, and they're not, they're not dissimilar. That was one of KITA's requests, that if we made these too much diff, it would be very difficult for them. The county is gonna pay KITA $20,000, and the request I got for our program would be $2,000 for them to administer this for us. So they're not getting a lot of money from us, and if we make it too difficult, they may ask us for more money for the administrative side of it. So Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of in it with Fred as well, I can't imagine if we took it 0 to 10, or 15, whatever you set, would make that much of an administrative difference between, you know, 1 and 3. But I would agree with Fred, I, I'd like to see it go down to 1 to whatever the top number is, it's consistent.
So if I re, took the priority off of it and just rephrased this, businesses with, that have no more than 15, no more than 15 full-time employees. Is that what I'm hearing consensus for?
That's what I would like.
Okay, you can't see in three heads shake. Other Councilmember Rosa Pepe's got a thumbs up, and Scott's shaking his head, so, okay.
One other comment, Mr. Mayor, and down at the bottom, when you have things that aren't qualified, you, you talk about wages, I'm not sure, kind of under that same category of being covered with the CARES funding for unemployment, where folks can get unemployment. Would that make them ineligible if they have received funding through the unemployment process?
Well, but the businesses weren't receiving unemployment, their employees were. So I don't think so.
Well, and the owner could be as well, and so.
Yeah.
But I appreciate the fact that you're trying to cover things like rent and that sort of thing, so forget my comment.
We liking the framework of what, with the, some minor edits here? Okay, if we can work out an agreement in the next two weeks, and, and if, you know, if not the next council meeting, for sure a month from now, I'd like to bring back a contract between KITA and us to administer this. And, and my goal, like I said, is to trail the county's program and let them fund, you know, hopefully our small businesses, if they're first come, first served, they've got this application, you know, keyed up, and hopefully our small businesses in Port Orchard get as many of those county dollars as possible. Councilmember Ashby, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, and now I'm trying to remember what it was. It'll come to me, I'm sure, not right now.
After the meeting is adjourned, unfortunately.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a quick question. I think at one time we talked about, I just can't remember where we landed on it, under the qualifications, we had previously talked about whether their current on their utilities should be a qualifier or not.
Yeah, and I don't know that we, and, and likely, these businesses aren't the utility, your landlord pays the utility, not, not the rent, the person renting the building. And I know there's a qualifier that we can't use these funds to pay our own expenses. So I just hate to get into language that talks about our utility payments.
I remembered my question. Are these reimbursable? I mean, does the business have to? They, we just don't write them a check for $5,000. They provide us receipts and we, and we fund the receipts? Do, how's that gonna?
Likely aren't, we are likely giving them, so KITA is gonna process these. We're gonna give the money to their, they're gonna keep all the records, we're not gonna see any of the records. Because we don't want the records. And so they're, they're going to collect the data necessary and certify that they've met the requirements for the program, and ask us for, they'll probably come in groups, and they'll probably ask us for, you know, $30,000 for this batch to fund these, this, you know, these businesses. And then we in turn then have to apply for reimbursement, so we're cash flowing it, we have to in turn.
Okay, so we're gonna give the business the $5,000 and they can spend it. They don't have to document us how they've spent it. And then we seek reimbursement through the CARES Act.
Yes, and they're likely certifying, they're, they're certifying that they meet this criteria on, on an application form, and that, for, for the eligible expenses.
Okay, and then we weren't gonna ask, if I'm remembering correctly, you said we were not gonna ask for financials from them because we didn't wanna hold those records. I guess.
And KITA doesn't want to either.
Right, I guess for me, I would just like to make sure that they were a solvent business before COVID.
And the, I think the language that the county's, that KITA's hoping to get the county to is some sort of a certification from the applicant saying that, that, you know, their business was profitable, there is no audit to it. They're, they're certifying that they were. They've got a business license, and now they've reopened, we're taking them at their word, that you know, that they meet those criteria.
I just wanna make sure that our small businesses, like you said, that have been successful, or even if they're just a startup, that they get served, because we're only going to be serving 20 businesses. So I wanna make sure it's, it's really helpful to those.
Yeah, and your, to your startup question, they can't be an immediate startup, because we were funding things that have been in business for a year from the application date. So it's not, not a recent startup. Councilmember Kachardi? You're muted again, sir.
I'll get better at this, I promise. My understanding was, is from a, we had mentioned the word cash flow, this. My understanding is we already received these proceeds, so we would be applying for forgiveness, not for the funding? Do we not already receive this funding?
We will receive, that we, we, we get, Noah can speak to this, he's the, we, we've already, we're expending dollars, and then we track it, and then we've got a process to get reimbursed.
Got it.
From Commerce.
I thought it was a forgiveness procedure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I guess that's why it's important that we make sure our parameters meet the IRS requirements, because in the end, if we get audited and they determine that it did not meet legislative intent, we are going to have to back. So it's important, and again, the, the language is very vague around businesses, it's about business interruption due to COVID. And that's why I think the mayor put their, an important bullet point in their ability to demonstrate loss of revenue due to COVID and related into business interruption. I think that's an important point, because those are the words that the IRS is using.
And, and you can see I'm putting this, this catchall in here, priority given to business that were closed due to the governor's order. It's pretty, pretty clear that you were affected by COVID if you closed for a period of time. And now you've real, now, now I have the other criteria, and now your business is reopened. So we're really trying to help those businesses that were shut for a period of time have now reopened, and they've got expenses like rent and things that didn't keep, stop accruing while, while they were shut down. I saw a hand somewhere on the, Mr. Bond?
I was just wondering, and I, I suspect we can't do this, but if a business has an open code enforcement violation, should they be eligible? And it could be unpermitted work, it could be operating during the governor's order. Is that something that is too legally perilous to touch, or should we consider it? And also, I was wondering whether KITA is going to have the ability to reach out to businesses, business owners who don't have, use English as a first language.
Wow, I hope so. I do like, Charlie, could you weigh in on that? Could we put a criteria that what, if, do they have a business license? Are there, how could we, how could we phrase that? One of the criteria is they had to have a business license. The code, the code.
Yeah, I think that question gets to a gray area in a legal risk analysis, so I'm happy to look into it and talk about it offline. I just don't think I can speak to that in an open meeting, but that's a great point, we can try to work within those legal parameters.
Mr. Chang?
I think Nick raises a good point, because there may be businesses that opened during the closure despite the, the orders to close. So it would be ironic if, you know, they opened, they operated, and they're still applying for loss of revenue.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, there was only one business that defied the order to, okay, there's two. And there were, they were, there were consequences that from the state, and they, I believe they lost their business license. So they would not, because they don't meet that criteria, they don't have a valid business license at this time. So I, I mean, is it, this isn't gonna be perfect, and there aren't that, you know, I'm only, we're only unfortunately gonna help 20 businesses. I wish, wish we had more. Further discussion on this, or are we timed to move on, and I think we've, I've got some, enough of your thoughts here. And we'll work on this over the next couple of weeks, and for sure by the end of the month, or next month, we'll have this back before you. We are to council committee reports. Finance Committee was supposed to meet tonight, and they, the meeting was canceled due to a lack of agenda items. I will share, we fared very well, if I didn't speak to you, speak to this, I talked to this at the last council meeting. I don't think we had the numbers yet. We were down 1.2% in sales tax, which is far better than we projected. The county as a whole was down 16%. And many of the cities in the county were down a much higher percentage of that, so I feel very fortunate. But that was, represents March's num, sales tax, and it was only two weeks that all the businesses were shut down in, in March. So the number will be, and percentage will be much greater over the next two months. Let's see, finance, I think, is going to meet. The date's been set, but it is not on the agenda, so we'll get that published on the next council agenda. Economic Development Tourism was canceled also for a lack of agenda items, the next meeting is July 13th. Utilities is June 16th, that's next week, that appears. And Sewer Advisory the following week. Land Use is, did you meet or not here recently? And did you give a report at the last council meeting? Councilmember Clausen?
Yes, could you stop sharing your screen, so we?
Why not? Now you're gonna ask me to do something else.
Go back to the, go back to the green button.
Yeah, I'm looking for the green button, I, my.
Just put your cursor at the bottom.
Yeah, I am, I'm doing that, but it's not, it's not giving it to me.
Mayor, I think it's at the top, you have to get the dropdown menu at the top of the page to appear, and then you can.
Share over there on the other screen, I got two screens going, guys.
Thank you.
All right, sorry about that, glad I could help.
Mr. Mayor, we, we did meet, I wasn't at the last meeting, and I will give a report out at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. I'm getting in trouble here from Zoom here, because I'm trying to minimize things, and I'm recording, it told me I can't do it. All right, where are we? That was land use. Transportation Committee, the next, last meeting was canceled, the next meeting is scheduled for June 23rd, is what I've last heard. The agenda says the 22nd, but that's not correct. Lodging tax, is there anything going on with lodging tax, Jay?
Actually, I'd like to bring one item up to everybody, we had a request from one of the nonprofits to see about reopening. To, to look at an item, I talked with Brandy, and the item they wanted to look at was to do some, for lack of better words, renovations downtown, and we had estate auditors, not a finding, but a opinion that that was not within the lodging tax purview. So we declined that, so just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And otherwise, we're on track for the odd, September, October timeframe.
Okay. Big festival, chimes and lights, Matt.
Next week.
Next week. Okay. All right, outside committees and agencies. I think I've talked about this, the AWC Conference is June 23rd to 25th, and John and Beck have signed up to be our voting delegates, I'm up for reelection on the board. Public Health Board, we have a special meeting scheduled for June 19th. That is the first day we can meet, and if our, after our three weeks in Phase 2, and if our data continues to support moving to Phase 3, the board will take action on the 19th of June and submit an application to the state for consideration for Phase 3. The state has indicated, the last one was processed virtually overnight, and with all the counties submitting applications, they will not be that timely. It'll take a few days, they're telling us in the future, to process the type of applications. So possibly the week of the 22nd, if all goes as planned, we could be in Phase 3, and you would see City Hall reopening to the public. Let's see here, Beck, do you have anything from other outside agencies you'd like to share?
No, I was just thinking, we have next week, KRCC will be busy, we have both a plan, a land use policy board meeting, and a transportation policy board meeting. And I know both of those agendas are full, because as with most committees, we haven't been meeting as regularly as, as we have in the past. Other than that, I, PSRC has not been meeting the subcommittees, the Transportation Policy Board, or the Growth Management Board. So I believe that's all I have on outside agencies right now.
Okay, thank you for your report. I know Kitsap Transit is working on the park and ride study. And we've put that on the July work study for the council to see the body of work that they've put together. So that's coming back to us. And now I'm on to the mayor's report. So we've talked about enough about masks and cares funds. Those were on my mayor's report. Janine and Ryan have been working diligently on refreshing our webpage. And so please take a look. I got new pictures. We've got new content. We're reorganizing it. So Janine is doing an exceptional job and so is Ryan helping us out to make sure that what we've got out there is current and fresh. Ryan came into my office last Friday and talked to me about starting to do a weekly or every other week a video about what's going on in the city. And I said, hey, that's a great idea. And he says, well, let's do one. And so I was real I was really prepared for that video. So we did about if you haven't seen it, it's on the city's webpage and on Facebook. It's about phase two reopening and when I looked at it, I cringed, but I'll get better. That's what this is about. So it's like Zoom. We as due to the governor's order, we now are wearing face masks in City Hall. I think I said a communication out to the council members too. So come and visit us during the business hours. We asked that you also wear a face mask while you're in the building. The Rotary Club has been talking to us for gosh, at least five years about making improve lighting improvements at Eda Turner Park. The two streetlights that are there are in conduct incandescent light fixtures. They don't put out a great deal of light. And when we put the bridge in, there's not a lot of lighting at the bridge. And so the idea was to add a third light fixture down by the bridge and then also put electrical outlets on the bridge so that we could put seasonal lighting on the bridge itself. And when we first started talking about this, it was about $20,000. And then the scope increased. And so the Rotary Club said, yeah, we'll do that and we'll raise half the money. And then a couple of years go by and it was 30,000 and then it was 40,000. And we just recently repriced everything. It was $54,000. So we're gonna, you know, our engineers estimates are always so accurate. So Noah and I are thinking it's $60,000. So so where we're at right now is the Rotary Club used to be a 50 50 split. We put it in the budget at 25,000 and the Rotary Club just came to us today and said, we've got our $15,000. Are you ready to do the project with us? And we no longer it's not, you know, 15 and 25, we're 20 short. So we have sufficient funds in the recreational reserve account to cover it will require a budget amendment. But I just want to make sure that this is still something the council wants us to do before we take this Rotary Club's $15,000. Because the cities, the cities, public works crew will do the work to install the new lights and the new electrical trench from one end of the park to the other. So thoughts or comments? I know Cindy and Jay are also members of that Rotary Club. So I'm certain I know where they're voting on this when if it comes to that. But anybody have any concerns or questions?
I'm supportive of that.
Others?
I may want to wait a while. It's I just think that the timing right now, I don't know. It's just like there's a lot of unknowns and I'd like to see some more data on the just the financials position of the city moving forward. I know those funds can't be used for a lot of other things, but just I don't I don't see it as as essential.
Okay, so how long would you like to wait if that was your desire? A month, two?
Yeah, I'd probably go two months where we really see just some of the the largest financial impacts from from what happened, starting in in March, continuing through through May.
Mr. Clausen, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, I I would have a tendency to agree with Sean. I think there's so much uncertainty in the next couple of months that I really think we would be wise to just sit on it for at least a couple of months.
Okay.
I would agree with that, particularly when we passed a resolution or an ordinance tonight regarding furloughs, which you don't intend to use, but there's just a lot of unknowns right now. So I would be supportive of waiting until we have a more defined financial outlook.
Okay. So if I brought this back in August, is that what? Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll know more then.
Sounds good.
I'll pass that along.
Okay, so Janine, want to put that on the agenda for us for August? I know you're the keeper of agendas. I sent an interim activities plan from our lobbyist about the potential special session end of the month. I don't know. There's a whole lot that we need to do other than pop some popcorn and watch. And updated. What's what's it?
Yeah, I based on our earlier discussion, I would think we'd want to add to their list of potential subjects, the issue of our newspaper publish.
Yeah, I don't know that they'll take that up in a special session, but we can certainly ask.
Well, just get it under our agenda, whether it's in the special session or it happens in January. Either way, I think it needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Right on our legis the city's legislative agenda. Yeah.
Yes, I'm sure this is an issue for others too. Yeah. Point. Okay. I'm just making myself a note because once I walk out of here, I tend to forget things. I've updated a personnel policy to reflect our practices versus what's in the policy. And it relates to vehicle mileage logs. In many cases, we have vehicles that are issued to a primary driver and we don't require that driver. If if you use the car for personal use, it needs to be documented and then you're 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 charged for that for that occasional use. But if example is the the administrative car is checked out to me and I'm the primary driver. So I take a mileage reading at the beginning and to the end of the month. And if I don't use it for personal use at all, there's nothing documented on it. But if Noah gets in the car or someone else gets in the car who's not the primary driver. Another example is sometimes the electric car doesn't go. It's inclement weather or I'm concerned about the range and I'll check out a public works vehicle and drive that. In those scenarios, my trip gets logged on there because my my used cars charged to different funds versus fun versus public works employees. So I just changed the personnel policy to reflect our practices versus, you know, historic practices. So if anybody say questions on that. We talked about the letter of support for the Port of Bremerton. And I'm just super excited that I've got an appointment to get a haircut tomorrow night.
Reach to it.
So let's see here. We're to department head reports. Mr. Bond, how about you? You've you've got a haircut.
Yes. So on the agenda, you'll notice that the traffic impact fee annual report was listed and is included in the last couple of pages of the packet. We are per state law and per city code required to give you an annual report showing the money collected and the money spent. Real quickly, on page one, the parks impact fees we in 2019, we took in funds, but we did not spend any and the balance is about 123,000 at the end of the year. I think pending completion of our parks plan later this year, we should be identifying a project and potentially we have enough parks impact fee money to start planning a next park improvement. And so as we head into the budget season, that's something that you all can be thinking about is what do we want to do for our next park impact fee project? For transportation impact fees, this is the page 100 of your packet. We have two accounts that we collect impact fees in. One is the citywide impact fee, which again, we did not expend any funds in 2019, but we collected about $160,000, bringing that balance to $702,000 and change. In starting to look ahead, Noah and Chris, the Assistant City Engineer and I, we we started talking about what we could possibly design in the 2021 22 session. And as part of the complaint amendments that'll be coming forward to you later this month for review, we're proposing the next six year transportation improvement program. And we are proposing a couple of design projects for the next biennial budget that would be paid for with traffic impact fees. And so we'll be taking that up with the transportation committee. But if you have specific projects from the traffic impact fee study, which you guys are reviewing that you are interested in seeing happen, there is some funding available to 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 use on on those types of projects. And then finally, the McCormick impact fee fund, we did spend some money. I believe it was related to the design on the Anderson Hill Roundabout. The and we took in about $124,000, bringing the balance to $610,000. And a portion of that money can be spent when we construct the Anderson Hill Roundabout, which is pending a grant award is slated for the next two year budget. But there's still going to be funding left over with no project designed or ready to go. And so the thought is maybe that now is the time to start looking at designing the complete old Clifton Corridor from the future school site to the Anderson Hill Roundabout to provide pedestrian improvements, shoulders and just an overall more or less rural feel to that corridor. Which, by the way, also is approaching the need for an overlay. And so I think if we do curbs and sidewalks or other like a non motorized pathway that could correspond with a maintenance project on that road here in the future as well. So anyway, the the good news is we have we've been we've been saving our money for a few years. And there's quite a bit of transportation impact fee money available now that we're at the point that we might want to start looking at how to spend that. Related to traffic impact fees, we do have at the work study meeting next week, we have TSI coming and they'll be be able to answer any questions that you have. If if you have specific questions that you would like answered, it might be helpful to provide those in advance so that they can make sure they they have the answer that you're looking for or understand how to how to best make use of the time that is allotted to them. I also wanted to report that the 580 zone zone reservoir at McCormick Woods, they came in for building permits last week. And so McCormick is fulfilling their obligations under our 2019 agreement to build that that water tank. They are currently revising the plans for the transmission main between that tank and the city water system that will allow us to divorce from Bremerton in terms of the old reservoir and old water main. So we're making progress on that. And then lastly, the downtown subarea plan project, we're going to be releasing a public survey tomorrow. We'll push that out through the Facebook page and put it on the city's website. And we've actually created a project website that will go live tomorrow. And so look for that and anybody that that you think might be interested in it, you may want to mention it to them. And then our parks survey is part of the Parks Plan Project will be coming out probably in another week. We're putting the finishing touches on that right now. So that's two bits of public outreach that we will be initiating probably by by Friday. That is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Janine, do you have anything to share from the clerk's office other than the webpage?
I do. So just to kind of follow up on the newspaper discussion that we had earlier. So I pulled up the current contract that we have with the Port Orchard Independent. And it looks like what we did is we did cost per single column inch instead of cost per line. So as of right now, the Port Orchard Independent, they're paying per inch at $2.40. And then the Kitsap Sun quoted us, it was $2.96 per line. And so I don't know how that comes out at the end. I don't know if Brandy would be a better one, but I just wanted to get you guys that information just as a clarification. And so this year we did change it from column inch to per line. And so there was a slight change right there.
It was a significant increase.
Yeah, yeah. And that's and so I know Brandy's out till Monday. So if there is anything you guys need me to do in the meantime this week, you know, definitely let me know. And I'm more than happy to help out, but that's all.
Tomorrow about reaching out to the sun.
Sounds good.
Okay. Noah?
I'm gonna be brief here. I just want to put a little damper on the plans for using the parking pack fee money because we did already budget that money to pay for the McCormick splash pad retrofit. And that costs is over 200,000. So don't get too excited about the parking back fee money because they spent. And that we will deal with all this in the upcoming budget cycle, which we do plan to talk with council in July at study session regarding budget.
That's the the engineers and the planners, they spend things two and three times. And Noah and I, you know, have to circle the wagons and and make sure that money only gets spent once. So Chief, you want you want after after budget talks, do you have anything to to share? I know you got some new chairs ordered.
We are still working on being able to have our people seated. No, I I think my message was earlier this evening and and we've all discussed since late last year. And then again, in January, the needs of our department, and I don't think that those have changed. We're doing all right. And I, again, I appreciate you guys providing me the opportunity to speak directly to you. I wish we were just all in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay.
Mayor, just a real quick question for the chief. Chief, that's not a question, a comment. First of all, thank you for all your emails, keeping us updated and the information that you've been sending to to your folks. Mayor, where is your letter and the chief's letter going to be published?
Janine was asked either tonight, I don't know how or in the morning to put that on our Facebook page and and website. But I wanted to read it here first before it went out live.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I I haven't written that as a formal letter, but if the council would like, I can certainly do that.
The chief put one out yesterday. A statement out yesterday too. So so we've been we've been busy. Ryan has been helping a great deal as as is Charlie. So we we've got some fine contract employees helping the city out. So with that, Debbie Lund, since you're here, do you have anything from the world of HR? I know you don't have a whole lot going on.
Nothing, nothing at all. Nothing further good of the order. Thank you.
Okay. I know you addressed in consent to giant items, the the increasing the wages on the summer hires with our hiring freeze. We've got an opening in Public Works, but we're going to kind of backfill that with summer hires. And it is an interim process until we get a better feel for our finances. So with that, I see a few members of the public were to our second public comment period. And if you're wishing to address the council, this you're welcome to do so at this time. See, Mr. Browning, go ahead. Please go ahead and feel free to address the council.
I think there might be two Brownings I saw, so hopefully you're talking to me.
William, yes.
All right. Perfect. I wanted to bring light to something that I hope has already gotten to you guys. It's the issue of someone you recently hired in March, Mr. Hader and Hader Industries. It have this year in March, a few weeks before the the 6th of March, he was in a court case and given an anti harassment order. And the other person in the case was one of our local business owners, a young woman in part of the chamber. The court findings, if you wanted to look it up, was Kettleson versus Hader 20 dash 2 dash 00356 dash 18. So I just wanted to bring it to light that Mr. Hader from the findings of the court has abused social media in the past, specifically with this person for the last three years, and it's taken a court order to stop him. And the order shows that quote from the court findings says showing persistent lack of respect for her boundaries. And as he was also quoting as saying that she was playing the woman victim card. So those are just a few things in it. I hope they look into it. And I think there was maybe a lack of research and background check on hiring process. So I just think it's a it's one a risk for future harassment to someone else or or her as well as like a liability for the city. And I just want want to feel like the city would look into a little more and not have something like that in a position where they have abused things in the past and have full access to that, especially on the city's behalf. That's it.
Okay, thank you for coming, Mr. Frank. And I see another guest on the on the phone or on the phone here this evening wishing to address the council this evening. And it appears not. So with that, our meeting is adjourned this evening.
Stay safe, everyone.
Yep.